And then that evening, another busy day. We'll be running up to Camp Nelson for a town hall meeting. I think that's all.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too.
I want to just touch on briefly on the Tulare County Association of Governments meeting and TCTA meeting yesterday. Appreciate the board for all being there. I know it was very long. It was a lengthy meeting. There was a lot of lengthy items that needed to be discussed. And for staff, I know that staff has been very helpful in the process, looking at how do we better meet the transit needs for our county as well as how do we be better stewards of the dollars that we have. So, a lot of good stuff there. Transit coordination and having some type of closer regional model is moving forward, although a little bit slowly, but it is moving forward. As well as something else that was very positive was options to refinance some of the, some of the future measure our revenues that we've already have through the treasury, going out and having additional bonds to be able to do more projects faster, take advantage of very low interest rates, as well as, you know, take advantage of, of lower cost to construction as construction costs we know rise every year. So, those are things that are, they're very positive as far as getting, getting a lot more work done from a, from a road standpoint. As Supervisor Vanderpoel mentioned, the Wellness Center is tomorrow, the, the open house. I'm very glad that we're at this point. It's, it's been a two and a half plus years or closer to three years in this process. And I think it's something that this community will, although it didn't necessarily embrace it from the outstart, I think that as people get to understand and know what value it brings, that, that there will be more of a, of a welcoming for this facility. So I think it's been very great. And I, I think it's, you know, having been at the Portville Wellness Center, that's really a shining star that, that shows the good work that can happen at these type of facilities. So, kudos to all the staff. I know there's been multiple departments that have worked on that for several years. As was mentioned, the State of the County is, is on Thursday. I want to thank everyone that will be attending, and even if you won't be attending, I think there's some positive things that we can see after the fact. Some, one thing of note, and I, staff might be a little mad at me for saying this, but I think the, yeah, exactly what's new. You know, with the, the whole video segment with the other board members that was created, I think hopefully is, is related into something that doing weekly or some type of regular video broadcast from each of the board members, I think it just goes to the point of trying to be transparent about what we're doing, sharing with the community what's going on, either with what we're doing in particular or just as a county as a whole. So, I think those are all very positive things as we move forward. SJVIA, the San Juan Quin Valley Insurance Authority, we have a board meeting on Friday. Friday evening, the Latter Day Saints Visalia Stake is, is having their 50th anniversary for being present here in Visalia in this community. I'll be attending. I will not, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the South County Detention Facility grand opening, but I do appreciate staff with the Sheriff's Office for allowing me to, to get a tour of that last Friday. It was very helpful, it was great, it looks phenomenal. And my cell was all ready to go with the soft walls and everything. So, they said the straitjacket, they've got the, the midget version ready to go. So I appreciate that. And then, yeah, just a couple of future meetings that I wanted to highlight. On September 4th, the Valley Water Blueprint Group, I don't know that they have an official name, is a meeting with folks in Sacramento in, to discuss what the state water resiliency plan looks like. I'll be attending that, trying to, you know, give local governments perspective as well as local farming community. And then in conjunct, or during the same time, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy is having their meeting, the 4th and 5th. I'm the alternate for that, for our region on that board, and so I'm planning on attending that meeting. That's also in Sacramento on September 4th and 5th. With that, we will move to public comments, item two. If anyone wishes to speak prior or on anything that's within our, within the board's jurisdiction but not on today's agenda, now's the time to speak. I have several public comments forums. If anyone else would like to speak, feel free to, feel free to take up. The first, we already have, yeah. All right, well, we'll take you first then. We'll take the person that didn't fill out the comment form first.
Sorry. I'm not a real rule follower, as you all know.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Paula Vanzant, resident of Visalia, 2752 West Oriole in Visalia, one of your constituents. As I said, I'm Paula Vanzant. I want to introduce myself with my new position. I'm the brand-new Development Director for four county farm bureaus, Fresno, Madera, Kings, and Tulare. So I'll be the community outreach and the out front person promoting ag, which is right at my wheelhouse, if you know my background. So, anything I can do to be of assistance, do not hesitate to call. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have David McElroy.
I'm at 1203 West Evergreen Court, Visalia, California. And first of all, I had sent a, an email to the, to the administrative office yesterday, to your department, and I'd requested, I believe I sent one copy to Melinda and another to, to Julieta, and asked that they be distributed to the board. Were they, may I ask? If not, I have to speak a little longer, I'm afraid.
They were, I believe they were.
They were. All right. All right, let me further, for the benefit of others, let me explain. I am here with what I believe is a grave concern about our Tulare County Tax Collector's Office. I believe that this office has been in violation of both my rights and those of my partner, Ms. Pamela Drake, who'll speak later on this, both once in 2016 and now again in August of 2019. Allow me to explain. The Title II of American Disabilities Act is quite clear, that all governance and public programs shall be accessible and usable by we the disabled. I happen to be a totally blind person, as does Ms. Drake. In 2016, we had a confrontation with them. I, I use for paying our property taxes, I use online banking. And this is works dependently from my standpoint because I have access to the, I can use with our screen readers, the, the bank's website. I am unable to use the county webpage. This is where the violations occur partially. But more than that, so in 2016, I had neglected, I, and I, I say this publicly because it, this is, this is a matter of record. I had not scheduled a second payment on the tax payment. I found that out. However, I found it out much later than I might have. I found it out well after the, the time had elapsed for me to correct the error. I found out by a, a square postcard-type document that was filled in by hand. My electronic scanner would not have been able to read it. The only way I found out about it was because I happened, an Uber driver happened to be in our, our home and said, "Oh, that looks like a tax." We had no way of knowing that. I complained about it. And I said, "I'm absolutely willing to pay the property tax that I had neglected." Certainly, you know, that was owed, I have no problem. But they refused to accept that. They said it was either the full payment with the 10% penalty or nothing. This happened, so on the 30th of June of 2016, Ms. Drake and I appeared at the, were at the Tax Collector's Office, submitted a, a second check. I had already submitted the full, the payment of the tax. They refused, they had refused to accept, but they did cash it. So, in any case, now we're, now that goes to, from 2016 to August of 2019. Now, first of all, your website is still not accessible to the screeners for the blind. It is, it simply, the homepage is, but beyond that, we cannot fill in the data. Secondly, and this is where I, I had sent the information to you yesterday, I, I had received on the 3rd of August, a letter which was written on the 1st of August by someone within the Tax Collector's Office, either Cash Cook or Mr. Paul San Pedro or someone else. Those are the names on the top. And this letter, frankly, it was in an envelope, and it was a type written, which allowed me to scan it, I'm glad it was, and that's, that's fine. It basically told me that from now on, they were unwilling to accept our property tax payments from our financial institutions because they did not have an envelope or a postmark. Excuse me, but electronic payments have been the order of the day for many years, for many agencies and many offices and many companies and many in the public. I vehemently object to that. And the, the issue here is that Mr. San Pedro apparently feels that those of us from whom he collects taxes are all of his employees. That is simply wrong. I refer you to the letter that Mr. San Pedro emailed to me on Friday, where he very, he dictated to me the fact that he would not accept me coming to the Board of Supervisors because you don't know the tax program and tax laws. I grant you, you certainly are not familiar with the, with the tax, the tax collection or its property, but you are familiar with, you know, personnel matters. And I believe he has stepped far beyond the realm of decency on this. Further, the, the letter indicated that the, the, the tax, the electronic tax payments would be refused beginning on the 7th of August. The letter was received by me on the 3rd of August. That is simply not enough notice. And I stand here today in, in real concern. Does this office believe that it has no jurisdiction, that it has no, no answer to the public nor to anyone else? I will go to the grand jury on this if I need to. I'm, I'm, I'm that angry. And I think it's something, I, I had originally requested that this be brought up as a board item, but I was told that as a member of the public, the only means I had to express this was in the county, in the public comments section. That is why I'm here today. And that is why I invite Ms. Pam Drake to come up with, to add what she might. Pam?
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we do have a comment card from Pam, Pamela Drake.
Yes. Well, by the way, to the, to the gentleman who had a six-year-old son playing in soccer Saturday, fear not, he won't listen to a bloody thing you say. But, but the good part of this is that if he, if he likes soccer, he may be, he may grow up to be like my grandson, who is now 16 and playing high school soccer, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay. Microphone, where are you?
It's there. It's, it's picking you up.
Okay. I hear the "woo" or "yeah," you know, you don't want to do either one of those. Okay, I am concerned, yes, I am very concerned about the taxes, about the way in which we were penalized. I mean, accessibility, I don't know if any of you even have had occasion to even think about accessibility, meaning, and it doesn't make, and it doesn't mean make the print larger. No, it does not. Accessibility, of course, is, this is why we use screen readers. This is how we, why we use electronic equipment. The two of us are not exactly an unknown quantity. Sadly to say, there aren't a lot of, of blind people in this small an area who are out and about doing things without assistance or sighted spouses or family members. But we're, we're pretty out there. And everybody who knows who we are at all knows that we cannot read the printed letter, the printed word. Now, in the letter that Mr. San Pedro sent, the statement was made that the county has been working on accessibility throughout the county. I can't, of course, I can't quote it verbatim. Okay, this stuff started in 2016. Actually, it started earlier. We've always had issues with accessibility in the county. How much time do you need? How many years do you need to, to conclude this? So here we are. We're getting penalized for late payments on taxes. We're getting, now we're told that we can't pay our taxes in the way that is meaningful to us, in a way that we can do, we choose not to ask for help. And we, we do not, we don't do anything, hardly. Well, we do a couple of things, but enrollment, we don't want to just give our information to the county and let them pull the payments. No. We, and we don't believe we should have to do that. We don't believe we should be forced to do that. Credit card charges a percentage. We shouldn't have to be penalized that percentage because we cannot see the document. So this is, this is my big concern in addition to...
To be honest, the, the credit card, to us, the credit card issue, that is, why would we, we're being expected, if we use a credit card, it is because we want to protect our bank account from, from being placed on a website. And for that, we're being charged, what is it, 2.5% per statement? That, to me, is a privacy tax. I don't believe we should be required to pay a privacy tax.
And I think, I think we pretty much, I think you know where we, what we're thinking and how we feel about it. And again, notice, by the time you get the letter, four days? I mean, no, taxes aren't due till October. However, it, why should, now maybe they thought that people had Oc, had until October to get it together, but if it's not accessible to us, if the site isn't accessible, that is the, the forms portion of it, then what's the difference?
And lastly, and I'd like this to be on the record, I believe that the one reason and one and the only reason that Mr. San Pedro is so demanding that we, that they be allowed to, to pull our account or, I believe that he is trying, and the reason he wants an envelope is because he's trying to leach the, every last overdue payment that he can. Are your overdue payment, do you require overdue payments in order to meet your county budget? I seriously doubt it. What is going on in the Department of Tax Collection? I would like to know that. I'm sure you would too.
And if it sounds as though we don't trust the county, we don't trust the Tax Department, you're right. We have lost respect. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person I have requested for public comments is Sabine Ramos. Please state your name and address for the record, and both microphones are on.
Hello, my name, oh, hello, members of the board. My name's Sabina Ramos, and I'm a resident of Tulare County. Today, I'm here to make a public call for transparency, accessibility of Tulare County's process, for approving the financial budget and the role you have been elected as board manner, board members have secured residents of Tulare County are provided with the determination for your recommendation and approved budget. It's my understanding that Tulare County currently has a zero scheduling public hearing for comments on the budget's worth more than 1.3 billion in taxpayer dollars. Every constituent in this county should be learned that the budget will have impacts on how funds are allocated for farming, roads, parks, social services, other areas will be recommended and approved solely by the board and the county CAO. It's my attempt to understand the current policy. I cannot help but wonder why these decisions would be made behind closed doors and not given a chance for residents to be heard. Is it the board? Is it that this board is, is, is this board afraid to hear about the gaps in services that the Tulare County residents depend on? Do you not believe taxpayers should have a say on how we fund child protections, healthcare, and highway maintenance? Unfortunately, Tulare County seems to be one of the counties in California which bars its residents from the opportunity to share their comments on taxpayer funds allocations while in advance of the adoption of the budget. Both Fresno County and Kern County have multiple public hearings that give residents the chance not to only comment on the budget, but can hear directly from the CAO on the justifications for funds allocations. I, I have heard that other counties have various public hearings and have the opportunity to share their comments. Both of these counties also hold preliminary hearings to give experts a chance to provide insights. Neither of these practices are welcome here in Tulare County. So my question to the board is, were you not, were you not elected to represent the best interest of the county? Until Tulare County begins to be transparent, it falls short in achieving its portrayed vision of the county that has earned the trust, the respect, support of residents throughout collaboration, fair and effective services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have a request from Stephanie Souza.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Stephanie Souza. I live in Tulare, and I am a Title and Admin Technician 2 at the Assessor's Office. I've worked with the county for over 12 years. I make up one of many crucial positions our residents depend on for swift and accurate process when dealing with matters pertaining to the courthouse services. As you can imagine, we often deal with high numbers of duties as many of our community, communities depend on the use of our services. It is our goal to provide a quality and effective process that support the needs of our coworkers to continue or complete the tasks at hand. Our work cannot be done without the support of others within our departments and many of our other departments to, to be a crucial piece that make our county systems work properly. This is why I'm here today, because we, the frontline workers of Tulare County, cannot properly continue to do our jobs effectively without the support from you, our elected board leaders. Throughout our contract negotiations, our members have stood behind each other because we all are experiencing the same challenges in our workplaces and at home. We have continually expressed proposed solutions but have been dismissed and have been told we should accept what every other bargaining unit has accepted. Many of us have even gone as far as sharing our challenges with you and the bargaining team directly, yet we continue to be ignored. I myself have set, have sat on several bargaining tables, and it's very disheartening to see that even through the supervisor changes, that the vision stays the same, that the employees are not at the forefront. We continue to see the same, the same that the cause, this, that caused this turnover crisis, and that the same continues to push quality employees out of our county. We need change. We ask for fair increase that will allow us to keep up with the growing costs of living. Our employees deserve to achieve equality for all positions. Your very own county studies have shown the majority are underpaid and many more have yet to be studied. It is your duty to ensure no county employees left behind. We are committed employees of this county who want to be here, who want to raise our families here, who want to continue providing crucial services, but we can only do so by working together with you to address the stagnant wages. We can make Tulare County the best place to live, raise our families, but we must address these, these challenges by putting forth solutions that include the voices of our employees who are responsible for the daily operations of our county. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a request from Esther Camacho.
Good morning. I'm Esther Camacho, and I'm a resident of Tulare County. As I said, my name is Esther Camacho. I'm a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant 2, and I have been in Tulare County for near, Tulare County employee for nearly 13 years. I am a proud SEIU member. Today, I am here on behalf of hundreds of our county coworkers who have made it clear on multiple occasions that you are not doing enough to support the needs of our residents, our workers, and our families. Right now, employees of our county continue to struggle to get by and provide for their families. The burden that many of us have impacts, of us, sorry, the burden that many of us face impacts the direct services we provide for our county's most vulnerable residents. While our mission as a county is to provide the residents of Tulare County with quality services to improve and sustain the region's safety, economic, economic well-being and quality, quality of life, I can tell you firsthand that we are failing to meet this very mission you are elected to uphold. We are failing to meet growing needs of critical services needed by our community while many of our colleagues continue to fall through our revolving turnover doors. If the economic, if they, sorry, if the economic well-being of our county is a priority, you as a member of the board would make every effort to address the turnover crisis impacting our county and the cost associated with hiring, retraining, only to see employees leaving to neighboring counties. The compensation and benefits proposal put forth by the county will continue to pin us further and further behind, while our families continue to depend on the same services we provide as employees. This is unacceptable. Our members have made it clear that we will no longer sit back and accept the county's disregard for our challenges as the dedicated employees. It is time that we work together to find a long solution instead of continued mandates that serve as temporary fixes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of this meeting, and we'll take up our consent calendar. Item 14 is pulled off calendar. Are there any other items wishing to be pulled for separate consideration or comments by members of the board, members of the public? I just want to make one comment on item 11. I know that these come on a regular basis, and I think giving department authority to approve those seems to make sense for the future. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Supervisor Shecklin, second by Supervisor Valero. Any further questions, comments? Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous, 5-0. Next, we'll take up item 3, public hearing. This is a request from a resource management agency to consider water service fee adjustments for the Yedum Zone of Benefit Water System in County Service Area Number 1 and the Seville Water System for which county is a court-appointed receiver and determine official number of written protest, receiving proposed water service hearing adjustments effective September 1st. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor, C A O, County Council. Second, control the raises. Sorry about that. My name is Ross Miller. I'm a chief engineer with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency and I'm here to talk about the item as the supervisor, or as the chairman just introduced. The item here is to cover water service fee adjustments in the communities of Yetdom and Seville. And this PowerPoint presentation does note the word revised because there was one referenced past resolution that was an incorrect number that has been fixed in this version. I will point that out when we get there. Just to give a bit of a presentation overview, introductions which we've already covered, I'll talk about the water system in Yetdom, the water system in Seville. I'll talk about the overall Yetdom-Seville Water System Improvement Project, the Prop 218 process overall, the current rate structure for the two communities, the proposed rates for the communities. Uh, I'll cover the requests for this item and then we can discuss questions and comments, but please feel free to interrupt throughout the presentation with any questions or comments or concerns. The Yetdom Water System is owned and operated by the county. It was constructed around 1994. It is a zone of benefit water system within County Service Area Number One. It currently has 65 water connections. The community of Yetdom also has a sewer service through a different zone of benefit. The water system in Seville, uh, the county has been serving as a court-appointed receiver for the Seville Water Company since 2009. This was recently renewed and, uh, I will talk about the future of this project when we get to the next slide. The system has been under a boil water notice for several years. The residents are unable to drink their water out of their tap. Uh, a replacement system is under construction. It currently has 84 water connections and this, uh, community is also served by a sewer under a zone of benefit in County Service Area Number One. Uh, the Seville Water System has been the subject of a lot of reporting, uh, nationally and internationally, the United Nations did a report talking about water access in the San Joaquin Valley, primarily focused on this community as representative. Associated Press has talked about it as well as other national and local news sources. So currently, there is a project to replace the water system in Seville that will ultimately connect the two water systems in Yetdom and Seville. The design for this project was completed in 2018. Phase one is under construction, which is the replacement system in Seville. It's going well. That's actually a photo from previous of the new tank that will provide fire flow to the community. It's around 211,000 gallons. It's pretty much been completed and it's going to be tested soon. Most of the water lines are in the ground, about 80% of them. There's still some work to do crossing, uh, there's a canal that runs through the community. We've got to get under that, which was the subject of an agenda item last week. Phase two of the project would connect Yetdom and Seville. It would also add a new well in Yetdom and would install residential meters throughout the community. Uh, we're currently working on an application. We expect to return to the board in a few weeks, uh, for authorization to apply for that. We are working with a variety of groups, including the State Water Board, self-help enterprises, Provo and Pritchard, who are working under a technical assistance agreement with the state, and, uh, the Yetdom-Seville C S D. I mentioned the Yetdom-Seville C S D. This was a, uh, new community service district that was the result of quite a bit of outreach and, uh, community input. The board put in an application to LAFCO to approve it. The voters considered it and voted in favor of forming it in November of 2018 and it's been conditionally formed. There are a few things that have to finish first before it truly takes over, one of which would be the completion of phase one of the project, another of which would be, um, the system has to be economically sustainable, which is the subject of this Prop 218 hearing. So Proposition 218 was passed by the voters several years ago and it places, uh, limits on increasing, uh, fees that are tied to property. Uh, it kind of follows a few steps. The most important of which is that notices of any proposed change have to be mailed. This was done on July 3rd. Um, the notices were sent out in both English and Spanish to the community. Uh, in addition, the notice was published, or was, uh, posted on our website along with a full rate study explaining the calculation of these rates. The notice, uh, a summary of the notice was also published twice in the Foothill Sun Gazette as well as included on the postcard that is sent with the billing information to the customers each month. The notice was mailed both to the registered property, or the recorded property owner for each of the affected parcels as well as the, uh, customer of record if different than the property owner. There are in total between the two communities 119 possible property owners, so, uh, if 60 valid protests would be enough to stop this item from being able to, uh, move forward. Protests must be submitted in writing. It must clearly state that it is against the increase. It has to identify the property either through address or A P M and it must include an original signature of the affected party, so the record owner or the customer. In preparation for this, we held meetings previously with the Clerk of the Board, Council, and one of the board reps to explain this process and to make sure everyone was on board with it. And today, we are holding this hearing, which was at least 45 days after the notices were mailed and, uh, there will be no subsequent election required. Some fees under Prop 218 require then a vote as part of an election. This is not required for water fees. It's just required to do the protest hearing. In addition, as I mentioned, the proposed fees today would, uh, meet one of the conditional formation requirements of the C S D to make it economically sustainable. The current rates for the system, uh, Seville, the houses in Seville pay $60 per month. This was established by the court order that established the receivership. Uh, Yetdom pays $56 per month for a single family. The school pays $63.50. There's a vacancy rate of 8.50 and a standby rate of 8.50. Standby rates will not change as part of this, those follow a different process, but the other rates will cha- uh, I believe, will change. The Yetdom rates were recently reaffirmed by Resolution 2013-0467. This may be, uh, incorrectly stated in the published version of this report, or of this presentation. Uh, they were actually set in 2011 and 2013, just reaffirmed previous rates. The proposed rate will be divided into two categories. There'll be a flat rate for customers that do not have access to a meter and there will be a metered rate for customers who do. The flat rate would take effect in September and the metered rate would take effect when meters are made available to the different customers, which for Seville will be the end of phase one and for Yetdom would be the end of phase two of the construction. Uh, the new flat, uh, the new flat rates are posted above. Uh, there will be a vacancy rate of 10.65. The single-family dwelling rate will be 75.05 and the school rate will be 79.40. Uh, the Community Services District heard these rates previously and issued Resolution 19 dash 001 for their system in support of these rate increases. The rates themselves were the result of a significant study by an outside consultant, Rural Community Assistance Corporation, who held several outreach meetings, came up with three rate options, and this was the preferred rate option by those surveyed. Uh, the rates have been reviewed by the Water Board, which was required under the receivership order, and they were submitted for review by USDA who holds a loan against the Yetdom system and the USDA confirmed no review was required. The metered rate would start off at, uh, 48.50 for single-family dwellings for a, um, fixed rate. There would be a usage rate of a dollar fifty per thousand gallons. The school base rate would be 50.130 and a commercial two-inch meter rate would be added, which would be, uh, $145.50, which is three times the single-family dwelling, which is kind of an industry standard that we have adopted. Again, metered rates would take effect when the meters have been installed and the usage rate of a dollar fifty per thousand gallons will not increase. All of these are subject to a inflation factor throughout the years. It's actually a higher inflation factor for the metered rate. This is to reflect, uh, some of the assumptions behind some of the underlying, um, funds and requirements for the two systems, including that water usage is assumed to remain constant under the flat rate. The meters will also take effect about, uh, one full month after the meters have been installed, so that customers will receive an update of, hey, under the metered rate, your bill would have looked like this for the month before they take effect. And for a typical family, uh, the base, or the total usage rate would, uh, or the total expected rate would go down based on standard family usage and the bill would be expected to be 64.79. So now the requests are to hold a public hearing, which is currently undergoing for consideration of the increase of service fees for the Yetdom Zone of Benefit Water System in County Service Area Number One and the Seville Water System for which county is a point of court-appointed receiver and to determine the official number of protests received on the proposed water service fee adjustments as shown in Exhibit A effective September 1st, 2019. And the second would be to close the public hearing and if the number of valid protests is below 50% of the number of property owners, adopt a, the proposed service fee adjustments as shown in Exhibit A. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to state that pursuant to state law, fee increases are subject to a formal protest procedure. In order for a protest to be counted, it must be in writing and include the protester's name, the parcel number, a statement that it is a protest to the fee increase, increases, and a valid original signature. And if you have any, um, you may, uh, come forward, uh, while the public hearing is still, uh, ongoing and present those to our chief clerk here at the front. Um, and just as a reminder, only one protest per parcel will be counted and must be made by the owner or customer. Any questions, uh, comments by members of the board? Supervisor Van Der Poel?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Ross, you didn't highlight in the presentation, I know that the, uh, county has been the, uh, receiver of the Seville Water System since 2009. Um, just a real quick historical comment as to, uh, the number of protests to rate increases received by the county for, uh, both Yetdom and Seville, uh, over the last 10 years would be helpful.
It is my understanding that since taking over as the receiver, the county has not attempted to raise rates, water rates in Seville. As for Yetdom, uh, the last time that the rates were increased was 2011. Uh, there was not a, enough of a protest for the rates to be increased and then in 2013, those rates were reaffirmed. I, I can't speak to the hearing before that. I haven't fully researched, uh, hearing before that.
Supervisor Valero?
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you so much for the update and report. I will share with you that at first I was a bit concerned with the increased rates given the context of the community. However, the prepared study did include governance and rate structures for the new C S D that is needed to move this forward. Um, it is included, it included an evaluation of the protect, uh, projected water service rates under the newly formed C S D. It considered operating revenues, operation and maintenance expenses, debt service, reserve requirements, and other related costs. Additionally, the systems currently operate at a deficit for the county and the general fund has provided significant fiscal operations in support for these pre- previous years. So that is why I feel that the issue presented to us at the table now is that, uh, we need to move forward with something because the community has been hungry and ready for it. So, um, that is why I believe we should move forward with this.
We're good. Any other comments from the board members? Members of the public? This is a public hearing. Again, if you have any, uh, written protests, uh, please come forward or if you just have public oral comments. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Uh, the public testimony portion is now closed. Who, do we counted our protests and?
Yes.
So we're good on that? All right, um...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Ross, just trivial, I guess, or not so much trivial, but an, an average, uh, water user, say, in a municipal water system, what's an, what's an average rate? I can't go by mine because it's really low. I only shower once a week, so... No, I'm just kidding. I'm sorry.
I can attest to that. I sit next to you.
Serve.
In general, water systems for, uh, larger utility services tend to be a lot cheaper. Visalia, uh, similar rate for similar water usage would probably be in the 30-ish dollar range, maybe high twenties. This is, um, for, uh...
We're paying for the infrastructure and everything with these rates. I understand that, so, just curious. That's a good answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments, questions by members of the board? Seeing none, I'll take action.
I'd like to make a motion.
We have a motion by Supervisor Valero.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Supervisor Van Der Poel. Please cast your votes.
I gotta find my screen. Touch anywhere to view my PC and then it goes back to that.
Amy broke her computer.
Again.
How do you want to vote, Amy?
Misses.
The clerk can...
Yes.
All right. Is that good enough or do we all need to...
Oh, there it is.
Votes are unanimous, five-zero, and the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go a little bit out of order as we have, uh, some guests from out of town that are here and we'll take up item 22 next. There's a request from the County Administrative Office to receive a presentation by Public Financial Management Asset Management LLC regarding annual report for the Millennium
Thank you, Chairman Crocker and members of the board. Uh, my name is Ken Sheeple. I'm a managing director at P F M Asset Management. We are the investment advisor and administrator to the Tulare County Millennium Fund Program and I'm here today to provide the annual update on that Millennium Fund Program. Uh, the Millennium Fund was created in 1999, uh, through the issuance of taxable verbores demand bonds. Uh, those were a bond issue of the county and the purpose was really kind of an innovative structure to create an endowment that could be used to fund, uh, public capital improvements going forward and as we'll see in a minute, it's, it's been very successful at doing that. Uh, the bonds are secured by the county's portion of the state and national tobacco settlement, uh, agreement, which is funds paid by the various large tobacco companies in response to, uh, significant lawsuits by a number of states, uh, in, uh, because of the health, uh, healthcare costs associated with, uh, smoking. Um, so the program receives those tobacco settlements, uh, makes, uh, debt service payments on the bonds, makes funds available for annual appropriations, uh, and then the goal ultimately is to grow the principal value of the fund to, uh, sustain it in perpetuity. Uh, in 2006, uh, the bonds were refunded, uh, from, uh, bonds that had been sold, uh, in the open market to one that was a private placement, which meant that a single buyer, which at the time was an Irish bank, uh, purchased the whole, uh, bond issue, which really simplified the structure, reduced costs significantly, and locked in the borrowing rate, which previously was set by supply and demand in the marketplace. Locked... and demand in the marketplace, locked it in at a borrowing rate of a one-month LIBOR plus twenty-five basis points or plus a quarter percent, LIBOR being one of the commonly-used short-term market indexes. Our role as investment advisor and administrator is to manage the funds, the invested assets of the program, and specifically, the investment objectives are to achieve and maintain parity, meaning that the assets in the program are sufficient to meet all of its obligations, including paying off the bonds over time, to generate a return on the portfolio in excess of the borrowing rate established in the bonds, and to do so while carefully managing and mitigating the various investment risks associated with managing any kind of portfolio, primarily interest rate risk and credit risk. We provide an annual update as of the end of each fiscal year, which ends on April first. On April first, the aggregate value of the fund was about fifty-five point seven million dollars. There's actually three funds there, the Millennium Fund itself and two associated smaller funds. The bond fund is used to hold monies which are used to pay the debt service and principal payments for the upcoming fiscal year. The tobacco settlement fund is the fund that receives those settlement payments that first go to the state and then they're divvied up amongst the county participants across the state that holds those temporarily. And then each June first, those funds are allocated between the bond fund and the Millennium Fund to make sure it's, that the bond fund has sufficient funds to make the debt service payments for the subsequent year. The program since inception in 1999 has provided appropriations to the county in a total of fifty-three point two million dollars. You can see the annual appropriation amounts here. There is a cap of three point five million dollars annually in the bond agreement, and it's subject to funds availability, and those, that amount of funds has in fact been available for many years, and I believe those funds are to be included in the county's upcoming capital improvement plan. The market value of the overall program assets are shown here. They have grown from the initial bond issue of forty-five million today to fifty-five point seven million. That's a growth of about eleven point three million dollars. And again, remember, that's after all, providing all the annual appropriations as noted, as well as paying all the program fees, including the principal paydown on the bonds as well as the interest on the bonds. So the goal of the asset part of the program is to earn a rate of return that can continue to grow that principal value over time. A key part of the program is to achieve and maintain what we call a favorable unwind position. The chart on the left shows the asset levels as the top green line, and it shows the remaining principal, the bond issue, the remaining principal that's outstanding as the blue line. So the principal on the bonds themselves is being paid down on an annual basis. This year's annual payment, that was made on August first, was one point two million dollars. So each year, the principal value of the bonds shrinks as the bonds are paid off. They'll eventually be paid off in full in fifteen more years in the year 2034, and the county would be left with the remaining assets as an endowment-type program that could be used to continue to fund appropriations. So that shaded favorable unwind position continues to grow over time as the assets are growing, while the principal outstanding on the bonds is declining. From last year to the current fiscal year, that unwind position improved by one point seven million dollars. We would view this as one of the key metrics of success for the program, that the assets are growing while the bonds are being paid off. And now turning a bit to market conditions and the investment strategy that PFM employs for the assets. Here we show the yield curve. The dashed blue line represents the yield curve most recently as of the end of July. The solid blue line is where it was at the end of the last program fiscal year on March thirty-first, and the dashed yellow line is where it was in the prior fiscal year. And there's been quite a lot of changes in market conditions, especially with regard to interest rates. So over the past few years, interest rates had generally been rising across all maturities. Beginning last year in particular, you see that the difference between the dashed yellow line and the solid blue line, that short-term yields increased while longer-term yields actually started to decrease. We call that a flattening of the yield curve, and actually what we have today is called an inversion of the yield curve, where longer maturity investments actually have lower yields than shorter-term ones. That's somewhat unusual and somewhat driven by current economic and market conditions. That represents a significant challenge to managing the investment portfolio for the Millennium Fund because its borrowing rate is tied to short-term rates and resets periodically. Actually, each month it resets at current short-term rates, and the short-term rates remain relatively high, higher than they've been close to the past ten years or so, while long-term investment rates have actually fallen below short-term rates. So that's one of the challenges that we're grappling with since the beginning of this year. Looking back over the past fiscal year, this chart shows the borrowing line as the stair-stepped gray line, as one would expect in 2018 in particular. Short-term rates were rising as the Federal Reserve raised rates four times in calendar year 2018. The individual dots represent individual security purchases in the program. The goal, of course, would be to buy investments that have yields higher than the borrowing rates. In a few cases, we were buying investments that had yields less than the borrowing rate. Those are mostly very short-term investments tied to the need to make those debt service payments on the bonds themselves. So there we're rolling small amounts of short-term federal agency securities just to make sure that the hundred thousand dollars or so of interest that's paid every month is available when needed. But the bulk of the investments have achieved the goal of a yield in excess of the borrowing yield on the bonds supporting the program. On this chart, we show the historical sector allocation of the portfolio. These are the different asset classes that we've invested in for the Millennium Fund program. The issue itself and the trust indenture documents that govern the type of investments that can be deployed in the Millennium Fund program, unlike traditional foundation or endowment. Can't buy stocks. We can't buy a broad range of things. It's highly limited to just high-quality, highly-rated fixed-income investments, much like those that constrain the county and its general operating fund portfolio. Over the past few years, we've really focused primarily on investing in floating-rate corporate securities and to a lesser extent, until recently, short-term credit instruments like commercial paper, which are sort of the short-term equivalent of corporate securities. And we chose floating-rate corporate securities in particular because they match the interest rate sensitivity, the interest rate changes on the underlying bonds. So as the, as short-term interest rates rose, the borrowing costs associated with the county's bonds rose, but the yield on those floating-rate corporates moved in tandem with that. And so if we can purchase investments that have short-term floating-rate yields in excess of the borrowing rate, those are good investments for this type of program. Since inception, the return on the Millennium Fund assets have exceeded the cost of the borrowing rate, as shown here, by about a third of a percent or thirty-four basis points, the annual return being two point four six percent versus the borrowing rate of two point one three percent. Again, these reflect the market conditions that have been in place, certainly over the past ten years. Short-term rates have been very, very low, but our goal is not necessarily to just chase the absolute highest yield and take a lot of market risk to do that, but rather to minimize the market risk difference between the borrowing rate and the investment rate. And again, the program has achieved that, which has helped it earn income sufficient to make all the obligations under the bonds and including the appropriations. This is a quick snapshot update of the portfolio currently. It's broadly diversified by the permitted investment sectors in the pie chart on the left. Credit quality remains very high. The credit quality is limited by the permitted investments in the bond documents themselves. The market value has actually improved a bit since the April one fiscal year start. The average duration of the portfolio, that's roughly like the average maturity, but it's really a more measure of the interest rate sensitivity of the portfolio, is a little bit over half a year. That means it has relatively low interest rate risk, which is a good thing, and the yield at market of two point four two percent today far exceeds what you could replace those investments with in the marketplace because many of the investments were bought in prior years when rates were high. This chart shows the distribution of the Millennium Fund assets by maturity as the blue bars. Generally, our strategy has been to limit investments to those maturing five years and less for the purpose of minimizing the interest rate sensitivity. The blue bars represent the final maturity of those investments. The yellow bars represent the duration or the interest rate sensitivity of those investments. So for example, those floating-rate corporate bonds have much less interest rate sensitivity their final maturity. So we might own a three-year corporate bond but whose interest rate resets once a month or once a quarter. So from a duration or interest rate standpoint, it would have less risk and show up in the yellow bar as a shorter maturity or shorter interest rate sensitivity. Overall, the assets are managed on a relatively conservative basis, again, focused on exceeding the borrowing cost, but doing so in a safe and effective manner. Currently, just to give an update briefly on current market conditions and some of the challenges in the investment markets, US economic conditions remain reasonably favorable. GDP in the US has been growing at a pretty steady pace. Last year was perhaps a little bit stronger than the average pace. We're in now the hundred and twenty-first month of the current economic expansionary period, which is the longest on record. We have a strong labor market. The unemployment rate at three point seven percent is near a fifty-year low. Inflation is relatively low, actually a little bit even below the Fed's two percent target. And really, the only signs of weakness in the economy are some slowdown in manufacturing and some weakening of business confidence and business investment, primarily related to some of the ongoing trade disputes with China in particular and some of the other countries going on. And we see how that affects the market almost on a day-to-day basis when there is a little bit of optimism that perhaps they might be a trade deal or some negotiations. We see, of course, the stock market improve and interest rates actually rise a bit on those news, and the converse is true as well. Interest rates have really reversed course after rising for the prior five years or so. They've come down very sharply this year. The Federal Reserve reversed course and cut rates for the first time since 2008 at the July Federal Reserve meeting, cutting at a quarter percent. Fed Chair Jay Powell characterized that rate cut as really more of a mid-cycle rate adjustment rather than the start of a long easing cycle based on economic conditions, which remain relatively favorable. We would not expect the Fed to push rates all the way down to zero like they did in 2007 and 2008, but the market is expecting additional rate cuts perhaps as soon as the September Federal Reserve meeting. And of course, the Fed's action will be driven by how the economic data plays out, and in particular, how those ongoing trade negotiations play out as well. So our interest rate outlook, rates are low. The yield curve, as I noted earlier, is inverted. That's a challenge for managing fixed income, especially short, intermediate-term bond portfolios like the Millennium Fund. We believe the current sector allocation and structure of the portfolio is structured appropriately for current market conditions and will continue to generate favorable results. And we'll continue to balance the long-term goals of the program, growing its assets, earning high yields while carefully managing and mitigating the risks associated with the program. So I recognize that was a lot of material, and perhaps there's a couple new board members that haven't been exposed to the Millennium Fund program in the past. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Very good. Any questions, comments? Members of the public? Thank you. Very thorough. Appreciate the, that we're continuing to grow. I think it's something that's important, that historically this board has created this fund to help with many of our capital projects, and so making sure that we have this, you know, regardless of whatever the economic situation is outside of this county, that we continue to make improvements and investments into our capital, and the Millennium Fund allows us to do this. Supervisor Townsend?
I'm sorry, I did have one question. Ken, you had mentioned that there was a three point five million was a cap each year. I noticed on one of the slides it had a, I think for 2019, it was a four point five four million. What's, what happens with that difference?
Yeah, there was a makeup that year, which was, so there was a little bit of a carryover from the prior year.
Oh.
Where they had not taken the full appropriations, and there was some accommodation for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? This is action to receive the report or accept. We have a motion by Supervisor Randapool, second by Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back in order and we'll take up item nineteen. Request from the county administrative office to approve a memorandum of understanding with the local government commission for a civic spark fellow.
Good morning, board, CAO, council. Denise England, Water Resources Director for the County of Tulare. The matter before you today is to approve a memorandum of understanding between the local government commission for a civic spark fellow from September tenth, 2019 through September ninth, 2020, so a year-long program. During conversations with the Department of Water Resources staff about some of our other projects, they presented Tulare County with the opportunity to assist them and host a civic spark fellow. The civic spark fellow program is administered through the local government commission as part of their AmeriCorps program. So this person would receive compensation through the local government commission, through the AmeriCorps program, and would be of no cost to Tulare County. Department of Water Resources requested two fellows. One will be stationed in Sacramento, and the other would work out of this office here in Tulare County at one of our empty workstations. The benefit is that the fellow will spend about eighty percent of their time working on DWR statewide disadvantaged community water needs assessment that includes drinking water, wastewater, storm water for disadvantaged communities. We administer a program for the Tulare Kern Funding Region, which covers a four-county region, to do the same thing, and that study, that needs assessment, would be rolled into the statewide needs assessment. So it's a unique opportunity to partner with the state on an important water program and continue to work with them and hopefully garner additional resources. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just to comment, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I think this is a great item, and really I'm excited to have someone from DWR here to see what work you do and this county does related to disadvantaged community water infrastructure and all the work H-Don would create grants to be received from the state. I look forward to meeting this fellow.
Great.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, all entertain motion. Moved by Supervisor Randapool, second by Supervisor Shucklin. Please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, five-zero. Thank you. Next is item 20. Approved resolution for tax rates for fiscal year 1920.
Morning.
Morning.
Cass Cook, Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. This is to set the tax rates for the county. Tax rates are comprised of a different number of items versus the $1 per 100 assessed value or the 1%. In addition to the 1%, there are locally approved bonds, such as school bonds, as well as bonds approved for special districts as hospitals. So those are all approved by the voters and those are included in the annual tax rate. In addition to those, there's on the fringe of the county, we share some tax rate areas with other counties. And so some of their voter-approved bonds will also figure into the tax rate in certain tax rate areas. So that's how the...
Cass, talk to your microphone.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you. So the tax rates comprise of a number of items. The 1% voter-approved bonds. And that's how we arrive at the tax rates for the year that need to be approved by the board. In addition, just want to give you some information. There's also a statement of valuation of the property in Tulare County. And last year's rolls totaled 470, almost $479 million in property taxes for schools, special districts, cities, counties, and other taxing entities. And that's based on an assessed value of $36.4 billion. And this year's total is assessed value of $38.2 billion. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, Cass. Any questions? Comments for Cass? For members of the board, members of the public? Entertained a motion. We have a motion by Supervisor Shucklin, a second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, 5-0. Thank you, Cass. And I believe you're up again for item 21.
Great. This is the GAN limit and it is a limit on the amount of taxes or proceeds from taxes that can be spent by the government entity, in this case, the county. So that is a limit that was established and by California law. And there are options for the county board to choose the annual growth in that factor. We look at California per capita personal income as well as change in Tulare County's assessed valuation attributable to local non-residential new construction. So we look at those two numbers and based on that is how the GAN limit is increased year to year. That is your option to choose between the two. Right now, I think our limit is at over $4 billion, $4 billion.
4.4 is in the staff report.
Yeah. And we are well under that. I think we're under a billion right now, so.
Any questions? Comments for Cass? That was, I guess, my comment. I know we brought this up, or I don't know if I brought it up, but just understanding the GAN limit in previous years is, I know that staff's recommending option two because it provides probably more flexibility, but how much more flexibility do you need when, you know, we're at 4.4 billion is the proposed and we're spending, you know, I mean, our overall budget's 1.3 and you're saying our spending's less than a billion? I mean, is that, I mean...
Either, either would be fine.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Supervisor Townsend, did you have a...
Oh, you asked the question.
Very good. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter? All right. This, this item does require approval with an option. So state option one or two. Assess, so option two. Very good. Okay. That's a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, a second by Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your vote. And the vote is unanimous, 5-0. Thank you. And we'll take up item 23. Request from General Services Agency to receive a presentation regarding the projects completed in fiscal year 1819 and proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 1920 through 2324.
All right. Getting the presentation up. Good morning. John Hess, General Services Agency Director, here to do a presentation regarding the CIP. So we'll have introduction and background, then we'll look at the last year's projects, the project for the next five years, talk about some future actions, and then conclude with requested actions. So the CIP is a five-year planning tool. It includes improvements to county-owned buildings, summarizes funding requirements, and ensures proper stewardship of our county resources and assets. It's an opportunity to take a look at our building needs for departments, for conditions, and so forth. So the purpose of capital projects is to make sure those departments have the building resources they need to do their job. We have over 100 buildings and a million and a half square feet, and the most recent building assessment that we utilize is about 10 years old. We have two main operating protocols, and by the way, this is a lengthy presentation, so jump in with any questions you may have along the way. We're going to review a lot of projects, so don't, you know, don't feel the need to wait to the end. There's a lot to cover. So we have two operating protocols that we utilize in capital projects. First is that projects must align with and support the board's countywide strategic business priorities. And two, that projects must enhance service delivery for forecasted growth as well as substandard building conditions. So as was presented earlier, one of the major sources of funding is our Millennium Fund. However, about 50% of our funding comes from county departments as well as one-time funding from the County Administrative Office and the general fund as allocated by the board. That's about half and significantly the single largest portion of funding we receive. We also receive money from state and federal, primarily from the South County Detention Facility. That's the largest amount we've received in capital projects. And then we receive very, very minor amounts of fees and sales taxes typically from the sales of plan sets. So this shows that same information sort of graphically. You can see half the pie is our county money, another quarter is about Millennium Fund and a quarter on state funds and a very small sliver from other fees and taxes. Last year, we spent over, we actually spent 16.75. A subsequent slide will correct that, but it's 16.75 million that we expensed last year on capital projects.
Portion of state funds that we would normally receive towards building?
Very, very small.
Very little.
If, if really any. Most of the state funds that we receive would be actually received by a department and then perhaps transferred to us.
Thank you.
So in the past five years, the county spent $132 million. That's a combination of the last five years of expenditures on capital projects. Capital projects completed or advanced over 30 projects last year. Many of them were smaller, medium, and then a few large ones. Our administration and overhead was 4% for the fund last year, which is well below industry standards for construction management. So this graph has changed a little bit this year. Not only, obviously, the figures have changed, but what we've done is we've added the forecasted expenses for the next five years as included in the CIP. So what you can see, I'm going to walk through this. Beginning in 2002 up to 2015, it was under $10 million for expenses of capital projects in the county. Then in 2015, we really started to see every year major growth, peaking about two years ago. Of course, that peak is associated with the South County Detention Facility as well as the purchase of the Cigna Building. Last year, the year we just completed, you can see it dipped way back down to 15 million, still historically a strong, healthy number, but without the construction of the South County Detention Facility, it's way down from its peaks. The dashed lines represent projections into the future based on the CIP figures included in this presentation. So those numbers, and we'll get to that in those tables as well, those numbers are certainly subject to change. They are predictions and forecasts, but nevertheless, we do have a $40 million construction project coming along, which will peak those numbers again, and they'll come back down probably at the out-years of those four to five-year plan. This is the pie chart showing the expense side of capital projects, 92% of which has been dedicated to projects, direct project expenditures, 2% to salary and benefit, and 2% to support. Those are the administration and overhead that I mentioned earlier. 1% to direct consultant contracts for supporting projects, perhaps for geotechnical engineering, for architects, for construction management, things of that nature. And then three, operating transfers out represent not an expense on projects, but a redistribution of funds unused back to departments. This happens primarily with Health and Human Services. They'll deposit money for a project. The project will come in under budget and then there'll be money to return, or a project won't materialize and there'll be money to return. So not a project expense, but a use of funds to re-return back to their departments. Okay. So these are going to be the projects that we completed last year. Of course, the South County Detention Facility was complete. The NOZA completion was approved last week. About $7 million was spent on that last fiscal year. And these numbers represent the fiscal year, so July 1 to June 30. HJSA had three major projects at about $3.75 million. Space Project Phase Two at GovPlaza, Visalia Wellness Center, which is opening this week, and then the Farmersville Tenant Improvements. They moved into the space vacated by the Farmersville Headquarters, and they're now using it for training space. So Countywide Space Improvement Project as well, GSA and some other departments completed their rehab projects. Propping evidence, a very large, important project for the county that was completed last year. Fire Station One began construction, will be finished this year. Board Technology, the technology project that, you know, has been improved here in the board, that was completed last year. Juvenile Justice Center Flooring, Ag Commissioner completed a few projects. Fleet Services Parts Room, this was a project that allowed the motor pool department to enclose their inventory. They have tens of thousands of dollars' worth of auto mechanics inventory and they wanted to secure it and then distribute it out to the mechanics as necessary. So this is a good investment for security purposes. Sheriff Farmwell, Parks Improvements, Courthouse Well Failure. If you recall, about a year ago, last August, the courthouse had a catastrophic well failure. It was, it was closed for a day. That was the cost for us to go in and fix that repair, you know, on an emergency sort of crisis basis. Central Yard Well was finished. Sequoia Field Program Facility was in the last stages of design. We did some sidewalk ADA improvements along Burl as part of the paving project. Emergency Dispatch was in construction. We did a parking pad for the mobile food vendor to the north of the courthouse, and then we did some improvement for probation inside the courthouse. And these are some very small, minor projects, and so I won't go through each of them, but many of them had to do with benefiting individual departments or small, small projects throughout the county. So here are some pictures of the various different projects that we completed. Of course, here's the interior upgrades here in the chambers. The Central Yard Well over at the, what we call the Central Yard or the, the old motor pool, road yard at Avenue 256 in Lever's Lane. Fire Station One, there's the foundation being poured. This is the framing of the motor pool parts office, the exterior of the, of the office to be enclosed for security, and it got a little air conditioning for the, for the stock clerk. Ag Well and Hay Barn for the Sheriff's Farming Operation. Here's the hay barn. We did not finance, the county has not financed the solar project directly. We're using a third party and we're going to pay for that over, over the years with, through a power purchase agreement. This, we however, capital projects still manage the construction of that project, so it was quite an undertaking, but not, not a cost to the county. We have a variety of fire stations that were paving. This is the three-year reverse station before the paving that before, the conditions before we went in and fixed it. Here it is after. Here's the foundation for the vocational education building up at the probation facility up in the North County. Here's the framing of the building and the building in its near-complete form there. Visalia Wellness Center, as was mentioned a couple times, we did essentially interior remodel, landscaping, as well as a very robust arbor structure outside and a fence. Robust. It's not going anywhere. It's going to be there for a long time. Here's the interior of that. This is the Farmersville Training Center that HJSA uses for training facility formerly occupied by the Fire Department. This is our GSA's offices after the, before and after the remodel work. He moves out and it gets, it looks real nice then, yep. He's got a nice, great place too over at Cigna though. So here's a GSA's office at the old Office of Ed. This is HJSA at GovPlaza. The lobby at Government Plaza was, perhaps if you recall, we did quite a bit of work on the carpet and paint, of course, but also that, that lobby desk. Hallways at Government Plaza were all improved. And then the South County Detention Facility finished and, and ready for opening here shortly. And I think the grand opening will, you know, you hopefully get to see inside of that or some portions of that next week. We did a lot of carpet and paint projects as usual throughout the county. There's a lot of folks who just need sprucing up, not necessarily major renovations and structural issues, but just a nice little sprucing up throughout the county. Okay. So now, this is the five-year CIP that we are projecting based on consultation with departments, consultation with the CAO, looking at the substandard needs that we are aware of. Just a whole lot of variables and factors go into constructing and making a recommendation as to what projects need to be completed over the next five years or should be addressed over the next five years. First and foremost is the Sequoia Field Program Facility. Again, those numbers may fluctuate. I, right now, I'm estimating actually that this year's going to be a lower number and next year's going to be a higher number, but nevertheless, we spread it sort of equally across these two years with some tail-end expenses coming out in year three. Fire Station One will be complete in the spring, so that'll be fully expended this year. South County Detention Facility, what we've done is we've included $3 million for sort of post-opening needs. Of course, this is a very large building, very complicated building, and the sheriff's operation has obviously some very sensitive needs in that building. So when they get into operating, we are, we, we absolutely know there are going to be things that need to be addressed, corrected, modified, just to be improved for their operational purposes. So we've set aside an amount of money that'll be available for those needs as they arise over the next 12 months. Danube Library, we've concluded the property acquisition process, so that'll be moving into construction. An RFQ has been prepared and released, so we're looking for an architect to be on that project. Probation Youth Facility, this began in sort of scoping last year. The probation department is interested in repurposing their youth facility. They have deposited those monies in capital projects, so it's their funds to be utilized to repurpose and renovate that building. Parks Improvements are available at the discretion of the Board of Supervisors, you know, in advice of the PAC and the Parks Division in GSA.
Park improvements we've got as an estimate for this next year of $819,000.
Last year, we spent $80,000. Significant difference, maybe comment as to what some of the goals are, what, what the intent is. I think it really shows a part on the county, our commitment to the parks, and, and we want to provide better recreational opportunities for our residents.
Yes. So we've had the opportunity to do community meetings throughout many of our communities that have parks, and the needs are extensive. The needs are beyond even the $800,000 level. In an abundance of prudence and caution, there has been an intent to wait until we feel comfortable with direction from the board separately through the parks, energy and the parks activities, rather, to really identify what we're going to use those, those things for. In the, in the long run, it's handy for Neil Pilliard to have that money available as things come up, so he tries to be very, very cautious about using it. Thank you. Okay. So number seven, we did paving here on Burl Avenue. This would be doing similar paving after the solar project is complete over at Government Plaza, so we'd like to do some parking and paving improvements over there. This is also an opportunity potentially to partner with the Health and Human Services Agency if they have funding available within their department. Number eight, the Museum Ag Equipment Building. The Historical Society did a presentation to the board a few months ago and requested support of the board to help them find a location at the park to, or construct a location at the park to store the to-be-restored historic ag equipment. So this is that project, and we are very excited to partner with the Historical Society. They're bringing $100,000 also to the table, so this is going to be a great opportunity to give their, their equipment a home. Three-Year-Off Bathroom was approved last week. This includes about a 10% contingency on top for unforeseen costs. Solar paving matching funds, this is available for other paving needs or other energy-related needs that come up through our projects in the utilities group. Board Chambers Technology Project, this is complete. However, there's an invoice that needs to be paid after July 1. It's already been paid, but this has to do with just the way that timing works. It ended right at the end of June and beginning of July. Yeah, maybe that's where we'll retain it for now. The probation JDF railing, there was railing done in one of the sheriff's department's detention facilities, and probation may want to do the same thing. If so, they would provide the funding to capital for that project. Ag Commissioner has some money available in capital projects that they've deposited over the years, available for them, potentially for a couple different projects. The one that they're looking at right now is doing their own solar. They were not as part of the solar portfolio, so potentially they could come back and be purer. so potentially they could come back and be pure cash placement on the solar project. VoC Ed is going to be complete this year. Courthouse Roof and Exterior, there's some roof and exterior sort of aesthetic panels that need to be replaced. Bob Wiley Multi-Year Roof, that'll be in construction. It was approved and awarded last year. However, it'll be in construction shortly. What we're recommending, as you see the number for next year, is 500,000. We're recommending using a little bit of a different project delivery method, doing a job order contract on that and do two roofs at once, and then we'll be done with the four housing units out there at Bob Wiley. Burl Avenue, we've completed, as I mentioned, the paving. Now we'd like to get in there and do some landscaping here along Burl Avenue to just keep on this sort of beautification energy that we have here at the Civic Center. Harmon Field, a little complicated here, but for, some of the Board members may recall that we completed a multimillion-dollar remediation project over there at Harmon Field so that it could be utilized for industrial or commercial purposes going into the future. There's still a portion of that property that's parceled that we are going to have ongoing maintenance responsibilities. The state and the county have executed an operation and maintenance agreement. That is going to represent a cost of about a half a million dollars to the county for the next 30 years. What we're recommending, and as shown here in the CIP, is setting that aside in two amounts this year and next year so that we don't have to worry about finding those funds over the next 30 years. They're ready there, and they're available for the continued maintenance obligations for the county. It's a small amount every year. It's, you know, as you can see, it wouldn't be more than 10,000 or 15,000 or 20,000 annually, but it's going to add up over the next 30 years. IT has some small charges at South County Detention Facility to close it up. They also have a fire suppression project. We are going to be doing a tower, or rather, a fence around the tower at Blue Ridge. And that concludes sort of the projects for this year. Now looking at the projects we're predicting over the next five years. 22 is the Ag Museum Second Floor Build-Out. If you're familiar with the Historic Ag Museum at Mooney Grove Park, it was built about 10 or 11 years ago. The county did not have the funds at the time to build out and complete the second story, so it's still not finished up there. It's an unfinished second floor. What we're recommending is not this year, but into the sort of out-years of the CIP, is going in and finishing out that space so that she can use it for display purposes as well as storage purposes for the museum. Springville Library, with the completion of Dinuba this year, we're recommending that the county address the need for a library in the community of Springville and look at expanding services there. 24 is, has to do with providing improvements on behalf of a tenant as part of a negotiation, a lease negotiation that we believe is going to be coming forward in the next couple of years. We have a very valuable tenant there that we value quite a bit. We want to make sure that they are happy with the building and they have the improvements they need. To do so, as a landlord, we're going to have to spend money to keep them and make that building still attractive for that. That'll be happening in the years indicated here. Fire Station Remodels, after the completion and construction of Fire Station One, the Fire Department has indicated the needs along these fire departments, and our recommendation, and you'll see with Fire Station and substations and even libraries, is really to get back out there as we get away from the large mega projects or larger projects that we've done, get back out to sort of the county's main buildings, which are the substations and fire stations as programmed here. Fire Station Paving, there's programmed amount of money this year of about a half a million dollars, as well as money coming into the future for their paving needs. Substation, the Sheriff's Office has indicated their priority number one is Pixly, so we're hoping to be able to get that started this year and into construction this time next year, in concert with another substation that we'll talk about here on the next slide.
Mr. Chair, quick question for John on that. So on the substation remodels, is this simply remodeling the existing substations? Or is there an option for a new location, property acquisition? Have we included any of those possibilities in here? Are we limited to just remodels?
That is all on the table. At this point, it's purely an indication of what money we think would be available to do the project.
Okay, thanks.
So the District Attorney is moving into the downstairs of Burl Avenue. That money was set aside last year. It's nearly complete. There also, we've reassigned the space vacated by IT at the basement of the courthouse. They moved to Government Plaza. That has been reassigned to both the District Attorney as well as the assessor. It's in the remodel process right now. Project number 30, we've done, as mentioned, we've done quite a bit of interior remodels throughout the county and a lot at Government Plaza. What we didn't do is anything for a resource management agency. So what we're recommending is this year, working on design for them and then doing a two-phase project, Floor 1 and Floor 2, over the years indicated here on the CIP. Similarly, we're recommending the same thing at this building. This building has not had any sort of renovation or remodel for perhaps decades, and it's an opportunity for the county to get in there and do some scoping, space planning and programming this year, design it, and then put it out to bid so that construction, renovation, remodel, furnitures, whatever is the pleasure of the Board can be done next year. So the next package of items, the green ones here, 32 through 37, these are all sort of interconnected, and we're calling it Space Project Phase 3. There, it's continuing, again, that sort of improvement to our buildings to ensure that departments have the assets they need to do their job. The Assessor Auditor, this is a pure copy from last year. We're just continuing on with the same intention that the Assessor Auditor has need to either renovate their current space or to better address their functional needs or to find a new space outside of the courthouse. So we would continue to recommend undertaking that scoping and architecture work this year, construction in the following years. 33, probation is also in a very important position right now. They'll need to find space shortly. They would like to use that opportunity to say, could they consolidate all of their Visalia locations into one? If so, where would that be? How much would that cost? We've looked at a variety of alternatives on that, and I think the Board should be aware of some of those alternatives. The number 34, the Emergency Dispatch Construction. The dispatch functions are going to be moving out of Main Jail and Mooney Grove into the Signa Building or the Tulare Acres Building. So then, after the occupancy of the South County Detention Facility and the relocation of dispatch, the Main Jail will no longer serve the function it serves now without inmates or without the dispatch there. It will still have some functions that are necessary. Our recommendation in that regard is to look at demolishing that building and then repurposing or reconstructing a building on that site. That building is well beyond its useful life, and the county, I don't believe, will need a jail at that location, given the two new jails being constructed into the future. 36 and 37 are tied together in the community of Porterville. 36 has to do with relocating the Porterville Substation in order to free up the former courthouse on Morton Street for probation. They are in need of space in Porterville. This space is attractive to them. To allow them to be able to use it, we would need to provide an alternative location for the Sheriff's Office, and there's a long-term vision to have them placed out at South County Detention Facility property anyway, so those two are interlinked together as well. So 38 is our Undesignated Major Maintenance Account. That is the unforeseen critical needs that come up throughout the year. An HVAC goes down, there's a plumbing issue, there's a well failure, whatever it is. That's the opportunity for capital projects to get in there on the spot and fix a need that comes up so that we don't have to find the money or go out to bid. We can get in there and make it happen. HSA has about $3.5 million available for their projects. And then this whole table here, really, items 40 through 49, those have been around many, many years in capital projects. The wisdom of them really could be questioned. We could say whether or not they're necessary. We don't use a lot of that funding, but it's helpful to have some of it. In the end, we may be able to collapse it into smaller categories or collapse it all into Undesignated Major Maintenance, since that's really what it's there for, just via smaller categories. I will point, draw attention to 50 and 51. Those are new expenses that we're recommending this year, given the Board's initiative to really take seriously the public art as well as take seriously our exterior building conditions. And so we've set aside money that will be available for the Public Art Committee to do their activities as well as address any exterior building conditions that we identify. So really quickly, in the bottom, you can see about a $40 million, and then 36 in decreasing every year, getting down to that $8.9, $10 million territory. That's about where I think we'll end as all of these things, these big projects get behind us, and we're into the territory of just doing substations, fire stations, libraries, and your essential remodels within county buildings, probably in that $9 to $10 million territory. So one thing that we would like to recommend to the Board for future action is because there are a lot of interrelated decisions that really have to be considered in a more holistic sense, what we're recommending is working with the Space Project Ad-Hoc Committee over the next six months, and then coming back to the Board sometime into spring with a more thorough set of space recommendations that will address a lot of our needs. Right now, we have not only physical needs of buildings, just condition needs. We have departmental relocation requests and expansion requests. There's also a very important unknown variable with respect to the State Court's Office. They have indicated they are looking at their long-term occupancy of that building. They're doing an assessment. They may or may not decide that they like that building and want to stay in the courthouse, meaning the Visalia courthouse here on Burl. They occupy about 50% of that building. They may also decide to go elsewhere and construct their own building. In either case, the county will have to address that and either do some renovations or address a major vacancy that would be provided there. That, of course, is many years down the road. We could talk five to 10 years that any sort of action would be needed by the county. But it's very crucial for us to recognize that would change how we utilize our buildings and how we assign our buildings into the future. In addition, on the last bullet, probation, assessor, auditor, fire station, substations, libraries, many of them are in need of expanded size or just in improved conditions. So again, our recommendation is to work with the Ad-Hoc Committee over the next six months, return to the Board with a very thorough set of recommendations in a few months with a work session. That process to include, of course, the county administrative officer, the affected departments. We would evaluate not only the immediate needs, but our long-term concerns. There's a lot of departmental requests that need to be considered. I think it's very important also, any discussion along those lines needs to discuss so that the Board has the opportunity to give direction to staff with respect to financing and funding opportunities. Is there an interest to continue to fund in the manner we have or seek other alternatives for funding? And our recommendation, I've said it a number of times, is to prioritize substation, fire station, and library remodels. So in the end, I'd like to acknowledge our Capital Projects team. They're small but mighty. There's only three or four of them, but they do a great job on a large amount of projects. Dennis Lehman, Kyle Taylor, Mark Van Fossen, and Victor Calderon. And then finally, our GSA internal support staff, the fiscal folks, the purchasing group, the clerical, our analysts, everybody really. The group of capital projects couldn't get all of those projects done without internal support and support throughout the county. So the request this morning is to conclude that the Board received this presentation, approved the CIP, authorized the submittal of a request to draw down $3.5 million as indicated on the prior presentation earlier for the Millennium Fund, and authorized the CAO to sign the disbursement letter for those funds from the Millennium Fund. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I think Supervisor Shackleton has some questions.
Well, I have a question kind of backing up to when you mentioned about the well failure here at our campus. Any talks with Cal Water about maybe connecting with their systems? Since this may be an ongoing issue for us?
Yes, so when that happened, we began that conversation with Cal Water as well. They're very interested in doing so. What we're in the process of right now is gathering usage information for their purposes to see over several months, especially the summer months, what usage does this entire complex constitute for their purposes. A lot of the infrastructure is in place, and hopefully, I might be speaking ahead, getting ahead of myself, but hopefully, if we go down that path, it would not cost a huge amount of money for us to connect to their system.
Other than that, to use your words, this is quite a robust list. But I think it's much necessary. You know, we need to keep up with our improvements. You know, we're going to be here for a long time, so the longevity, I think it's important to have buildings that are safe and modern. I think it's important for the employees. I think, you know, a lot of times we, morale, I think, is a big part of working in a safe, comfortable environment. So I think it's a great list, and have at it.
Thank you.
Very good. Supervisor Valero.
Yes, well, first, I'd like to thank you for your thorough presentation and your leadership on this, and for being able to take an aerial view of our county and identify what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and concerns moving forward. So I want to, again, congratulate you on that work. In addition to that, I know that a few weeks ago, we did receive a presentation on the upgrades to Potter's Field. However, since we are not going to fund it and it's actually coming from an outside agency, is that why it's not listed here?
Correct, so the Rotary Group, they're handling the funding, and if it came through us, we have a concern that prevailing wage might be required. If additional funds are needed, we have some in the Undesignated Major Maintenance category.
Thank you.
Very good.
There was quite a bit of news on this weekend regarding the Traver Cemetery with a Boy Scout from Kingsburg doing his Eagle project there. So I think that's another thing where somebody else is going in and taking care of that. So maybe at some point, we can recognize that also.
That'd be great.
Any other questions, comments by members of the Board? Members of the public?
I wanted to bring up, I brought it up last year, and I'm going to bring it up again. Just a hesitancy, I know that we're doing a lot of projects right now, and I'm really glad to see all the different projects. I'm very much in favor of that, but the concern that I bring up is in regards to the Millennium Fund and taking the full $3.5 million out of it year after year. I know that in a five-year period, we're looking to get back to our historical levels. So I'm not overly concerned about that, but I just think it's important to note that we want to continue to, we want that to grow so that as tobacco settlement funds continue to decrease, that we're able to have that for many more years. I know we have a very favorable unwind position that was just reported on, but I'd like us to have that for many, many future years outside of just what was stated.
Any other comments? Supervisor Valero.
Yes, I failed to mention another thing that Supervisor Vanderpoel mentioned early on with regards to the increase for park improvements and maintenance. And I'd just like to say kudos on that. And I know Amy sits on the, or Supervisor Shackleton sits on the PAC Committee, and thank you for that leadership on that. And I know that Goshen and Leadbetter have been receiving a lot of funds in regards to improvements, but we need to expand that elsewhere. And so I know that open space, green space, is really important to these various communities and especially unincorporated communities as well. So thank you for the increase in that as well.
You're welcome.
Very good. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the capital improvement plan and to receive the...
Second.
Presentation.
Very good. We've got a motion. Second by Supervisor Townsend, the second by Supervisor Shackleton. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
I was going to say, with the exception of the Sheriff's Substation improvements.
Next is item 24. Board member requests, Board members may make a referral to staff to have staff place a matter of business on a future agenda item. Any, Supervisor Vanderpoel?
And we talked about the future of the Visalia courthouse, and I know that there's going to be some ad hoc committee discussions taking place, but this is really more on, not a specific facility focus, but rather general county fund contributions to courthouse support. I think that we have an interesting relationship between the state and the county. And sometimes, it's easy to forget that state decisions and court decisions have cost implications for the county. And that's not always very public, but I think it's very important for this Board to be aware just how much money we are contributing to court functions and also what types of costs are driven up by decisions they make.
So a future agenda item with our relationship to courts or something along those? Okay, very good. Any other future agenda?
Mr. Chair, will we be looking at the accessibility? We heard in public comments for the computer systems for...
I defer to staff.
That's something that we'll look at.
We're looking at, we've opened a file to look at both the accessibility issues and also the processes.
also the processes.
So we don't need to agendize anything at this point?
No.
Okay.
Very good. Any other items? Seeing none, Madam Counselor, do we have need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chair. Item A is off calendar. Items B through F, and on the addendum, item A will be heard. I do expect an announcement out.
Very good. The board will be going into closed session on a personnel matter. As a courtesy to the parties, we are opening up public, or the comment time for items on closed session, agenda now. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any closed session agenda item?
Good morning, my name is Joe.
If you wait till you get up to the microphone, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Joe Hoffman, and I wanted to make a comment on number D or item D for close session. I can either make comment during the, the closed session or if it's more appropriate, I can do so now.
Now would be appropriate.
Thank you. I represent Adam Johnson, who is a deputy sheriff and is the subject of the proposal that the board will be reviewing. I'm asking this board to not adopt the, the proposed decision. I don't think it's an appropriate penalty. I think that it fails to take into consideration Adam Johnson's long service to the county. He was a deputy sheriff for over ten years. He graduated number one in his class from the academy. He got the number one score as a marksman. He ran the range. He promoted from the jail, work patrol, up through the gang unit. He had very consistent, above-average employee reviews. His service, I think, was not appropriately calculated into the decision and the proposal that the board will be reviewing. I think that the proposal is disproportionate. I think that in this particular case, there, there was a result that, that did provide some punishment, that being the injuries that Mr. Johnson sustained. He had a traumatic brain injury that was addressed in the proposal and by the briefing given to the arbiter. He also had a fractured sternum. Certainly, there's been a level of punishment that would cause somebody to change their conduct. If you look at the allegations in the proposal, essentially what it boils down to is ten miles of reckless driving. And to have over ten years of service set aside to the point of termination, I believe is disproportionate. That's over a, a year of outstanding service to this county set aside for every, every mile driven. So we will, I will request that the, the board decline to follow the proposal. I think the matter should be remanded for a level of discipline that is short of termination and proportionate to the conduct. If there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on items in closed session?
Good morning, members of the board. Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson. I'm Deputy County Counsel Diana Mendez, and I represent the Tulare County Sheriff's Department in the discipline matter that is before your board today. Members of the board, the Sheriff's Department does not take discipline in employees lightly. They conduct full investigations. They afford their employees their full due process rights. Even having an administrative hearing heard by an administrative law judge, which was the case here, in the end, the Sheriff's Department found that Mr. Johnson violated numerous county policies, numerous department policies. He put the public's safety at risk. He put his own safety at risk. And on top of that, when he was alerted to his behavior, instead of correcting it, he tried to conceal it. And that to the Sheriff's Department is just unacceptable. As such, the Sheriff's Department determined the level of discipline of dismissal, which is the proposed level from the administrative law judge. So we ask of you today that you please adopt that level of discipline. And when you deliberate and review the judge's proposed decision, we ask you to refer to paragraph thirty on page ten and paragraphs thirty-two and thirty-three on page eleven, which summarize Mr. Johnson's actions and what was proved by, by the evidence presented during his hearing. So again, we ask that you adopt the administrative law judge's decision to uphold the sheriff's dismissal of Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments for closed session? Seeing none, we will adjourn into closed session, and we will reconvene at one-thirty for our public forum.
So Jason Britt, county administrative officer, reporting out that the Board of Supervisors took action in a personnel matter to dismiss a person in the position of deputy sheriff two that was on the motion of Supervisor Shackleton, seconded by Supervisor Townsend
This is Deanne Peterson, reporting out on item C. The Board of Supervisors accepted a settlement offer, offer signed by the opposing party in potential litigation which could have been filed by the county. The adverse party is Cisco Systems. Suzanne Bloom with Winston and Strong LLP in New York representing. This case involves federal and state false claims act charges. The roll call vote was on the motion of Supervisor Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Shackleton, a five-zero vote. A copy of the settlement agreement may be requested as a public record. This concludes the reporting out for today.
Good afternoon. We will now take up item four, our public forum, which is also known as the Truth Act Community Forum, as a public forum to receive information from local law enforcement agencies regarding compliance with the Truth Act and to receive public comment regarding federal immigration and customs enforcement access to individuals that were given by county law enforcement departments in two thousand and eighteen. We have a Spanish interpreter available for this matter. We encourage people to speak clearly and pause regularly during the comments so that the interpreter can keep up with you if you need the interpreter. We ask that you conduct yourselves in a civil manner. We will not allow clapping, cheering, or any out-of-order comments during this forum. Doing so may cause the room to be cleared. Just be civil. We welcome all members of the public who could attend today. I want to outline the process as far as what the steps are for this forum. First, we will receive a presentation on the Truth Act statistics for the Sheriff's Department. After that, we will take comment from members of the public. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Those using the services of the interpreter will have five minutes to speak. You may not yield your time to others or reserve time to speak again. Because we might have a number of interested parties here, which we do, we request that you do not restate or repeat any statements of, or evidence given by a speaker before you. Please limit your remarks to the subject at hand, the Truth Act and ICE access to inmates in the Tulare County Jail. If you have a written statement or written comments, we ask that you submit the written statement or comments to the chief clerk, which is located up here at the front, instead of reading the statement or comments into the record. The board will have the opportunity to review any materials and ask questions. If you have completed a comment card, I will call out your name when it is your turn to speak. Individuals wishing to comment should approach the podium one at a time and speak directly into the microphone, giving your name for the record. There will be a timer on the lower right corner of the overhead screen visible to the public for the amount of time you have remaining on your comment. Once the comment cards are finished, those who did not fill out a comment card will have an opportunity to speak. Remember, please approach the podium one at a time. And I believe if you do have, I know there's several of you that have signs, we just ask that either you stand to the side or, or come up front so that you're not obstructing anyone's view behind you. If you're, if you're holding them up. And I believe we're going to try and use the queue system. It's, we have, we recently had some new technology upgrades to our, to our board chambers, and so we're hoping to have members who have requested to speak to be able to see that. So you should see who's coming up next and who will be able to speak next for that. With that, I'll now turn, the community forum is now open. It's not really a community, a hearing, but we'll now turn over to the county administrative officer who will present the statistics provided by the Sheriff's Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Britt, county administrative officer. The Transparent Review of Unjust Transfers and Hold Act, also referred to as the Truth Act, was signed into law by Governor Jerry Brown on, on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Beginning January first, two thousand and eighteen, the act requires local law enforcement agencies, prior to an interview between the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement and an individual in custody regarding civil immigration violations, to provide the individual with a written consent form. The act also requires that records released to ICE access be public records for the purposes of the California Public Records Act, among other provisions. One requirement to note is that beginning January first, two thousand and eighteen, the act also calls for the local governing body of any county or city in which a local law enforcement agency has provided ICE access to an individual during the last year to hold at least one public community forum during the following year. At that time, the local governing body must provide information to the public about ICE's access to individuals and receive and consider public comment. In compliance with the Truth Act, staff posted a thirty-day notice in the local newspaper for a public forum to be held by the Board of Supervisors on August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, at one P, one-thirty PM. The date of posting was July nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And now we'll move on to the review of statistics. The Tulare County Sheriff's Office had approximately nineteen thousand forty-six bookings in two thousand and eighteen. The Sheriff's Department received two hundred and sixty requests and transferred fifty-four individuals to immigration officials, a point zero zero three percent of total bookings. Again, to summarize, the two hundred and sixty requests from ICE, there were fifty-four inmates were released to ICE, two hundred and six of the requests were not transferred to ICE. Of the two hundred and six not released to ICE, eighty-seven requests were not recognized by Tulare County Sheriff's officials. Of the one hundred and nineteen requests that were recognized, eighty-seven were released back to the public, thirty-two are still in custody pending trial or case disposition, and the, those thirty-two in custody are on, in custody on charges ranging from murder, serious sex offenses, or other serious crimes. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll now begin the public comment period. If they, if you're wishing to say, make public comments, I believe we have comment cards in the back as well as the front, so please fill them out and give them to our chief clerk. First up, we have is Leti.
Good afternoon. My name is Letitia, and this is Maricela. We're members of the ICE at a Tulare Coalition. The ICE at a Tulare Coalition has decided as a strong collective action to not physically attend today's transparent review of unjust transfers and holds, also known as the Truth Act Forum. We stand as a coalition united in solidarity to not exert efforts, effort to organize behind the unsuitably planned Truth Act Forum this year. The sheriff and Board of Supervisors haven't taken the proper steps towards an inclusive and accessible forum in which our community can fully participate and engage in a healthy dialogue. We believe an inadequate thirty-day public notice was given, triggering the coalition to request a change of date to the forum. Thus, a later date would have allowed for more community members to be made aware of the forum and make necessary arrangements to attend. Earlier this month, we submitted a formal request to the Board of Supervisors for Sheriff Mike Woodrow to be present to hear public opinions and provide information during the forum. This request is in response to the Sheriff's Office providing Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, access to individuals in Tulare County jails in two thousand and eighteen, and the public's need for transparency from the Sheriff's Office. Given the current political climate and the president's emboldening of white supremacists, which creates high tension and fear amongst our communities, we believe that this forum will not serve as a safe space for folks to attend. We cannot ignore that the current events of mass shootings, national ICE raids, and human rights abuses in detention centers across the country have a direct negative impact on our communities in Tulare County. The sheriff's public desire to work with ICE is an ongoing safety concern and continues to build distrust between our community and local law enforcement. Our local government leaders and sheriff have not spoken out enough against these detrimental events which continue to demonize our communities and have left us feeling unsafe, which is why the rest of our coalition is not physically present at this forum. We stand in solidarity with holding a press conference at a different time and location due to our safety concerns. We need to look out for the mental and physical well-being of community members and ourselves, but we will not back down or remain silent. We will watch, listen, and continue the conversations of accountability for and with our communities. Folks will continue to monitor the future actions of the sheriff and local elected officials. We look forward to future opportunities to engage in a respectable manner with the sheriff and discuss concerns from across the county. Thank you, the ICE at a Tulare Coalition.
Thank you. Next, we have is Tom Faulkner.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Faulkner. I'm an attorney with the Tulare County Public Defender's Office. I'm here in my personal capacity. However, I just wanted to alert the board to the fact that we have received information that the Tulare County Sheriff's Department is violating the Truth Act by either alerting ICE to those, people being in custody for crimes that are not listed within the Truth Act. And as an office, we would like to see some clarity on who is making the decision within the Sheriff's Department as to who qualifies to cooperation with ICE. It seems that there have been some mistakes made as far as, for example, people being charged with a qualifying crime but then having their case resolved with a non-qualifying crime but then still being subjected to deportation proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Megan Caspier. Thank you. I apologize for anyone else that I might get incorrect.
Do you want to go first?
Megan's first, please. Sir, if you could just hand in your card to the clerk. Or not. Thank you. Yeah, whenever you're ready, Megan.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Caspier. I'm also an attorney with the Public Defender's Office here in town. I come as a private citizen, however, to voice my concerns, similar to my colleague, Mr. Faulkner's. I wanted to tell you in a, to bring a person's perspective to this from the perspective of our client. I had a client who was charged with a hit-and-run with injury. He, that's what he was charged with, that was what he pled to. And he started to serve his sentence. We had many hearings in front of a judge. This judge agreed to release my client early so that he could be present for the birth of his child. His wife had a high-risk pregnancy, and so he was released on a Monday to be present for her C-section and delivery that Thursday. Again, he had not yet completed his sentence, and so I had not received any notice as is required under the Truth Act indicating that my client would be subjected to ICE. He was released that Monday, and instead of getting a phone call from him hearing about the birth of his child, I received a phone call from his wife, who was frantic, asking where her husband was, that he had been turned over to ICE from the Sheriff's Department. My client was held in a detention center for two months before he was ultimately released. He missed court dates here because of that. We were able to get those continued. He is back home with his family now. He is, has an immigration attorney, and they are pursuing legal means to get him here. He now has four U.S. citizen children, with the most present one having been born in January. I bring this to the board's attention because there are a lot of things that could have gone differently in his case, I believe, had I had the proper notice as his attorney and being able, I don't believe his crime, a hit-and-run with injury is one of the enumerated offenses. I believe he was turned over in error. He was not intoxicated, he was not on drugs. The reason he fled the scene, as he told the police officers moments after the accident, he was apprehended. He fled the scene, he told the police officers that, as well as myself and the court. He had heard that law enforcement was cooperating with ICE, and he was scared of being detained. That is why he fled. Our community will face more. Our community will face more situations of my client if we continue to have this. It gets out through the community, you will have people fleeing like my client did. We have victims who don't come to court. I think the DA's office oftentimes will share our sentiments privately, that they have victims who are scared to come to court. There was a recent arrest in the courthouse a couple weeks ago that only further threatens to scare our community. And I brings to your attention in the hopes that we can work together with the sheriff to fix some of the kinks that I think are happening, and so that the community is aware of what we are experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Claudia.
I stand today as a member of this community, as an English teacher, as a second language, as a community organizer, and as an activist. I am deeply concerned because, as an English teacher, and this program was actually supported by Supervisor Shuklian, my students are not showing up to class because they are afraid of being deported, because they are aware that the Sheriff's Department is working in collaboration with ICE and their families are being torn apart. And if they come to class, we need to focus on what plan or action plan they need to implement so that their children are not left in Visalia or Tulare County in this matter unattended and without their protectors. And we also have the case of another community resident, a bully who is also terrorizing community residents in West Goshen and is sending these type of letters on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, and immigration, which is very interesting, and I'm going to read it out loud. It says, "Residents, you are in danger. Immigration officers don't like you. Without the proper documents, you are all in danger to be deported. The public officials are working in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department to identify every single one of you who are undocumented. Don't be stupid," and these are the words that he is using. "If you don't have the proper documents, you are going to be deported. And I warn you, don't bring the authorities to the community because they are working in collaboration with Immigration and Customs." So these are the type of letters that are being sent to our communities. And lastly, I would like to mention that, or remind every single one of you, that the sheriff works for every single one of us and for you, and that words matter, and that the safety of our community is under threat, especially after the recent events. And when you have the Sheriff's Department escalating the situation and motivating supremacists to continue carrying their guns and defend their right to bear arms, I wonder, what are we doing? What are you doing to protect our communities? What are we doing to protect the members of our communities? If anything happens in Tulare County and these type of messages continue getting out, who are going to be responsible for the lives that we lose?
Thank you. Next, I have Judy Rogado.
My name is Judy Rogado, and I am also an attorney with the Public Defender's Office. So I think those of us from our office are experiencing firsthand some of the effects of the Truth Act and the cooperation of the Sheriff's Department working with ICE, because it affects our population the most. The first thing I'd like to start off with is I just want to open the conversation between the individuals and our office with the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Sheriff's Department, so that there can be more formal transparency between the Sheriff's Office and our office regarding our clients and how it affects not only our clients but the community at large. I think it's already been brought up, but I want to make the Board aware of it, as well as possibly have some answers to this question, but there have been a number of errors in violation of the Truth Act of people being, information being passed along to ICE of individuals who do not qualify under the Truth Act to be notified. I'm not sure if the Board of Supervisors is aware of that. I'd ask that the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Sheriff's Department, at least in preparation for next year's hearing, have some statistics regarding errors and have possibly some conversations about how to prevent such errors. The other thing I'd like to bring up is I think it would be important for us as a community to know what kind of training or information goes along with those individuals who are making these determinations of how to pass along this information to ICE. I think that we need to know, we'd like to know at least the contact person, as a public defender, who to contact in the Sheriff's Department, or otherwise regarding notifications of our clients who are affected by this, information of what's being passed along, and determinations of how these things are determined. We'd also like to know, I think, as a community, information of who this individual is, but also the training regarding the requirements under the Truth Act, if they are in fact being followed. So that's just some information I'd like, we would like to have. And just finally, I think it's been brought up as, with an example of one of our clients, of how this has negatively, an error, a violation of the Truth Act, has negatively impacted one member and many members of our community, but along with that, ICE has been present in the past few months in the courthouse. I'm not certain if the Board is aware of that, if that's something that is being permitted, if that's something that's being permitted by the Sheriff's Department, but it has created a chilling effect for people, including victims of crimes and witnesses of crimes, to be present. And I think that that is something our community needs to be aware of and address. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ryan Jensen.
Good afternoon, Ryan Jensen. I'm a member of the community. I live here in Visalia, but I've been working in rural communities throughout Tulare County for quite some time. And I just wanted to highlight that, in my experience, I have seen that this chilling effect of community members in rural communities and throughout Tulare County accessing sheriff services and accessing county services is seriously a big deal. We're in a situation right now where residents are afraid to call law enforcement, in part because they know that being turned over to immigration could be the result, either intentionally or unintentionally, for family members. And we're in a situation now where, as one of the previous speakers just said, residents are feeling emboldened to use Tulare County Sheriff's Services, weaponize Tulare County Sheriff's Department against their neighbors, and use them as a tool of suppression. We have worked in a community where people were told explicitly not to attend public comment sessions at public meetings, Brown Act sanctioned public meetings, because they were told the immigration agents were going to be there. So I just want to highlight that while all this is happening, Sheriff Boudreau is doing nothing to de-escalate this situation, and it's up to you, all of you, as our representatives here in Tulare County, to get this situation under control. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Lucia Vasquez.
Good afternoon. That's Dr. Lucia Vasquez, and I am here, I do serve, I do have the privilege of serving on the Visalia Unified School District Board, and I'm not in that capacity today, but as a citizen of Tulare County and a resident for, let's just say, over 50 years, I thought it was important that I would come and speak today. I actually have questions about that 206 that were called to say, hey, there's something going on here, from my understanding, and I would like some clarification. I'm sorry if I can't look at you right, because I don't have my right glasses, so when I put my shades on, I'm not trying to be cool. But the idea of having 87 not recognized, I want to know what that means. Does that mean that 87 of the 119 that were not recognized were people that were mistakenly, because they were brown, just picked up? I mean, I don't understand exactly what that is, so I would like some clarification of that, because this is what we hear. We hear that people are just being picked up because of their color and then sorted out later. In our county, we are, as you know, the richest agricultural county, and who works those crops and who benefits from all those crops. I would like to ask the Board here to, and I urge you to be respectful of the immigrant community, to refer to them as undocumented or immigrants or something that is not an illegal alien, I would ask you to be vigilant to your sheriff that you employ, that when he goes out saying, oh, everybody should carry, and encouraging that fear-mongering that we've heard so clearly that's here. I would encourage this Board to take a stand and to be vigilant, to look for that transparency, and to look for things that are falling through the cracks so that we can respect the people. I'm sure you guys have all been here long enough to know that not everybody is a criminal. Those 32 that need to be unlisted, there's very specific things, that's why people can be picked up, and the kinds of things that none of us want in our community. But we all know, the 30,000 kids that come to our schools and all of their parents, that they don't fall under that criminal element. And for those, I am asking you to make that extra step, to find that respect, to find that transparency, to be vigilant so that we can be better. I will ask that you also request that sheriffs stay away from schools and stay away from courts and those places that are supposed to be sensitive areas and where parents are supposed to be safe. So that's why I'm here today. I appreciate your work. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Gary Gray.
Members of the Board, my name is Gary Gray. I am going to end my comment by asking that this be tabled or a motion be presented that it is withdrawn from this action. I'm here as a health care worker. My main two concerns are the co-mingling of information in our database system with the federal government. I don't believe that ICE has any jurisdiction in our database co-mingling unless they're invited in. And by inviting them in into this act that you've started here, it creates a lot of problem for health care workers. I've used the Sheriff's Office for fingerprinting, I'm a clinical pharmacist, and used their office to apply for Board of Pharmacy licenses, and I don't think that the Immigration Service has any business with that information, nor any information system technology of any businesses registered here in this county. We have crops that are coming due, we're a big agricultural area here, we have no business getting involved in this, and the time to nip this in the bud is right now. I'm an older individual, 81, spent time in Germany, soldier, my father, my brother, all the way back to World War I. I've had firsthand observation of what happened at Auschwitz, and this is no different than race baiting, and I'm strongly opposed to it. We don't need to go in this direction again. I don't know if any of you have served in the armed forces, but it's an experience that you'll never forget. So if this came from you, Amy, I heard, I'm not sure, but I hope that you would withdraw it and that it be tabled until the Attorney General's lawsuit that was filed last week resisting this, resisting ICE coming in is settled. This matter is not settled in the courts. I'm not an attorney, but I've seen things on the news, and I don't think we need to get into race baiting. This idea of grabbing and release by ICE, fingerprinting, photographing, registering them into the county database information system and co-mingling it with the federal ICE is not a good idea for us to get involved in here in Tulare County.
Thank you.
We've always opposed federal government intervention. Don't invite ICE in.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions. This is just a public forum. Amy, did you want to?
County Council? I have, may I ask for clarification from Mr. Gray as to what he was referring to in that I started something? It's the second time I've heard my name invoked today and...
I'm not sure. I'm just trying to look up what lawsuit he's referring to, but you know, the purpose of this forum is to report on statistics that happened in the preceding year. So that's, you know, that's the narrow scope of this, is what happened in the preceding year. It's not about giving ICE access to our databases.
You may rationalize to report statistics?
Gary, you've had your three minutes, so thank you.
Were you asking me? I'm sorry.
I think she was just clarifying what the purpose of this is, so we're just receiving, we've presented the statistics and now we're receiving feedback, so thank you, I appreciate that. Pamela Silva, you're up next.
Thank you, Pamela Silva, Visalia, California. I'm here representing...
Could you put the microphone down a little?
Sorry, I am short, I forget. I'm here representing a few different organizations, the California Republican Assembly from Porterville, Visalia, the Women's Federation, and also another out of Tulare. They're working, so I'm here and I'm their voice. I appreciate you guys holding this today. We don't have a very good turnout as we did last year, so maybe we do need to do this again. What I'm hearing from all the speakers is that we have problems associated with immigration. If they weren't here illegally, we wouldn't have any of these problems. Federal law mandates that we follow federal law. Constitution, federal law is supreme. We are not over the Constitution or federal law. All we ask is that we follow immigration policy, immigration enforcement for the people who are here legally. Not that we don't want people coming here legally, just that everything I'm hearing is because they are here illegally. So one way to fix it is to make sure everybody's here documented and here without breaking the law. And to enforce federal law. And Governor Newsom, the whole state of California, is in open, active insurrection, not following the laws. There's a bunch of them, and hopefully that will get taken care of by the President. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Melody Gillespie. If anyone else would like to make public comments, we still have comment cards in the back and the front.
Hello, my name's Melody Gillespie. About two months ago, six busloads of what appeared to be immigrants came to Porterville, and three busloads at Motel Six, three busloads were at the Old Paul Bunyan. And I checked into it, and apparently, these are the people that come across the border to work in the fields and some other temporary jobs. And then at the end, they are, at the end of their time, then they are again collected and checked, by what I understood, ICE would make sure that they were all accounted for, and then they go back home. So none of this has anything to do with people coming in and working on the farms, they're already doing it. in and working on the farms. They're already doing it. I can't remember what the program's called, but it's already happening. It has nothing to do with prisoners in our jails. And I support the sheriff and what he's doing.
Thank you. Next, we have Yonifer Gallegos.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I want to first thank you for your time and for giving us the space to express our opinions. So, I'm a concerned community member. I'm not here to represent anyone. And I think I just want to remind you that you are elected officials. You got people to vote for you, and it's not only voters who you're representing. You're representing our immigrant community. You're representing everybody. As a community, we need to be able to provide a safe space for these folks. If there is ICE out, especially at our court system, how are we going to expect them to then become what we all say, legal immigrants, right? So, we need to do better as a community. I have loved ones who live in fear every day. They do not go outside, and that isn't only affecting them, that's affecting you all. That's affecting the economy in Tulare, I mean, in Visalia, in Tulare County as a whole. We need to do better. We need to make sure that we are not working in hands with ICE. We need to make sure that we are standing up for our community. And I just want to let you know that you represent all of Tulare County. So, that's all I had to say, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Sir, I think we have one more. Is there any other individuals that would like to speak? Abigail Solis is next.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Abigail Solis. Many of you know me. I am born and raised in Tulare County, have lived here all my life, and I'm currently elected an official, school board president in early March, as most of you know. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity and the time to address this matter. You know, most of you, like myself, have lived here most of your life, your entire life, and you know that here in Tulare County, we take pride in each and every one of the residents that lives here and works here, and we try to strive for a certain level of acceptance and making everyone feel welcome here, all of our students, all of our parents, all of our farm labor families. And I think it's obvious that currently, the climate that we're living in has not really provided for that for many different reasons. And I think that we've heard many examples from the people who have spoken before me about the different reasons why that may be happening. You heard from the Tulare County Public Defender's Office about multiple examples of things that may be going against the laws that are put in place. I think that's concerning, and we should do something to figure out if, why that is happening and what we can do to fix that. You've heard that there's ICE in our Tulare County courtrooms. I think that is news to us. So, there's various examples of things that maybe we didn't know about that should be looked into, because all of these things are causing great stress and concern for the residents that we all, you know, are here to represent. It is affecting our schools. It's affecting our families. It's affecting people wanting to go to work and, you know, and do the jobs that they really want to do to provide for their families that ultimately provides for this county to be as successful as we always have been. I think that right now, it's feeling like you're having this forum as a means to check off a box, which I understand sometimes as elected officials, we just have to do certain things. However, there are people who wanted to give comments and who wanted to be involved that we're not able to because of the way that it was put together. So, I'm hoping that we could, that you would do your due diligence to provide a different opportunity for people to participate and for us to hear from everyone who wants to be involved with enough time and notification for those who weren't able to make it here today. At the end of the day, as an elected official in Tulare County and a person who resides here, I think nothing worries me and stresses me more as the unprecedented amount of mass shootings that we're seeing in this country. And I would urge you to do whatever possible to, I know we can't prevent it if it happens, but we want to do our part to make sure that people feel safe, people are safe, that we avoid a horrible tragedy like that if we can. So, anything you can do to de-escalate tensions in this county, I would urge you to do that as the people who represent us all. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I've gone through all of the comment cards, so if there's any other individuals that would like to speak that did not complete a comment card, now would be the time to come to either of the microphones and speak.
Can I ask for just the clarification since the purpose was to talk about the statistics?
Well, the purpose was to receive, was to receive comments and feedback regarding the statistics, but there isn't necessarily a back and forth.
Oh, I can't get an explanation of what that 87 meant, so that the statistics that you are reporting-
Ma'am, you had your opportunity to speak, so we received your comments. We can, staff can, if they're able to get back to you, they can.
Excellent, thank you.
Otherwise, you can reach the board office, just like anybody else can on a myriad of issues. Madam Counselor?
As far as I understand it, the 87 released back to the public were released before ICE got there, or ICE didn't pursue an arrest. So, that was what not recognized meant.
Very good. Ma'am, did you wish to speak? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Joyce Ferguson. I'm a retired Department of Corrections, first woman chaplain in all male facility in the state of California. I'm also a citizen of the United States. We have laws. I don't agree with all the laws, but I don't pick and choose whether I'll obey a law or not. Our laws are in place until they're changed. I agree that we need to do things to try to change our laws that are not good. It's my understanding that my Board of Supervisors that I voted for were done because I am a citizen and registered voter, in that that you represent the registered voters and who are the ones who elected you. I agree, there's a lot of tension, and it's difficult. It's not an easy answer to anything, but I'd like to see our laws obeyed. When we become to where we're just, everybody wants to be nice, 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 but sometimes nice gets abused. Everybody wants to be nice, nice, be kind, change words, whatever. But it's still, the reality is still the same. You are either illegal or you're legal. We have laws in place to try to take care of those situations. I'd like to see the law followed. That's it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Diane. I'm from Porterville. When you guys are enacting these laws or enforcing these things, what you need to remember is that you may be allowing the sheriff to take care of an illegal, and there are no illegal people, they're undocumented people. But keep in mind, those undocumented people are parents and brothers and sisters of American citizens. And those American citizen kids are being affected by this too. So, if you want to sit and say they're not American citizens, the problem is, is that they have children who are American citizens. And what happens to them when their parents are locked up or deported? Think about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, this concludes the public comment period. Do any members of the board have any comments regarding the presentation or comments made by the public? All right, there being no public comments or questions from the board, I will close the public forum. Thank you for coming today. Meeting's adjourned.